Gracious God, we give you thanks for this afternoon that you've given us. As the rain falls upon the fields, oh Lord, may your Spirit fall upon us this time. May your Spirit give us enlightenment, may your Spirit give us encouragement, may your Spirit give us knowledge, that learning about you, we might also live in the ways that you would have us to live. We thank you for the witness of our forbears in the faith and our Christian brothers and sisters who've gone on before us, and we give you thanks for all that they have left for us, and we ask that you help us that as we take up that mantle ourselves, that we might do so empowered by the same Spirit that empowered them. Thank you, oh Lord, for all your many blessings now and always. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Well, good afternoon. I'm happy to see y'all, and really happy to start off with this passage here that we have before us for this fifth week of our study together. We'll be covering Acts 11, the first verse of chapter 11, and on through the 12th verse of chapter 13. And we've got a lot of stuff that's kind of repetitious here in the first part of chapter 11, so I'm just going to briefly allude to it, and then I'm going to move us along to chapters 12 and the first part of 13, for spending a lot of our time. I also, I try to stick as close to the text as I can, but I think that it's also sometimes helpful to, you know, go out. In archaeology, there's a phrase that is always used, it's moving from the known to the unknown. And so like when you would come down on an occupational layer, like let's say the floor was plastered, and you found a little bit of white plaster there, you know, typically it wasn't perfectly flat, and so you wouldn't take your trowel and just like, you know, go straight with it, you would just try to flake the dirt off of it, moving from the known to the unknown, trying to uncover more of that white plaster in the hopes of finding, you know, the actual surface layer there. And so I think doing a similar thing with Bible study is often helpful too, to move from the known to the unknown, because there's a lot of things that you might not think of just instantly. And so there's so much about St. Paul, and also Peter, and some of the other disciples that are listed here in Acts, but especially about Paul. And we're moving into a section of the book of Acts that Paul features very prominently. And so it's helpful, I think, to maybe think a little about Paul and who he was and who he might have been, and other little things like that, like what year was this when this happened? You know, what year might it have been, what range of years might it have been, how old might Paul have been, what was Paul doing in addition to the stuff that's here? And I got the opportunity to take a class when I was at Duke with Rabbi Sager, and he was just brilliant, I mean, just so brilliant. This one class that we had was called Midrash, M-I-D-R-A-S-H. And Midrash is this Jewish tradition of kind of reading the white spaces in the Bible, you know, so you got the text that's there in black, and then you got all this white background to it, you know, and you're reading through, and you're like, well, what happened to this thing? Why don't we know more about this? What about this? And so it's a way of kind of, excuse me, wedging in there and asking other questions about where we can go from there, and kind of more of that moving from the known to the unknown. So I'd like to do a little bit of that towards the end, but I don't want to take us too far away from the text that we have, but I thought it might also be a good time for y'all to ask questions too. I know that Zoom has not lent itself very much to you all being vocal, so if you would like to ask some questions, I'm more than open to that, and I think there's all sorts of fun stuff that we have today with this passage. I want us to kind of think about a couple different things as we go through this little section here, and kind of highlight some of the big things. First of all, in this passage here, in this section of chapters 11 through 13 roughly, we see a couple key things start to emerge. Number one, we see increasing tensions between what we might call Christians and Jews, tensions between what we might call Christianity and Judaism. But as I've said before, I want us to be cautious about throwing those terms around kind of willy-nilly, because at this point, there wasn't just one Judaism, you know, I mean, there was the Hellenists, there were the Hebrews, the Aramaic speaking Jews, there were the Greek speaking Jews, there were other, there were Sadducees, there were Pharisees, there were the Ascens. I mean, there was all sorts of different groups within Judaism. To say that Judaism is just one thing even back then wasn't really a fair assessment. And to say that Christianity is just one thing becomes something that looks increasingly different as we go to increasingly different places and as we move away from Jerusalem. So there's a general thing that we see here of a movement away from Jerusalem and towards other cities, particularly in this little section, towards Antioch, and towards some other parts of the Mediterranean like Cyprus. And so then, so we're going to see increasing tensions between Christians and Jews, we're going to see increasing separation of followers of the Way, you might remember was the first term applied to Christians. We'll see increasing separation between the Way or Christians and Judaism. And we see a couple other things as part of this general trend, and particularly what we see to begin with is what we left off on last week, and that is issues of human sexuality and issues of food taking the forefront of this discussion, particularly what kind of food you eat, and if you're male, whether or not you've been circumcised. And I've said before, we think that those two things are probably inconsequential now to how we go about being followers of Jesus. We could see a lot of that discussion as just being silly, but it was the major issue, you know, the appearance of your special parts. And it's always fun to talk about that. I can't help but blush every, I turn into a seventh grader every time stuff like this comes up in the Bible, and it's amazing how much it comes up, not just in the New Testament, but even in the Old Testament. So issues of sexuality and issues of food, and then primarily, I think the big thing for us to look at is the idea of conversion, and what it means to convert. It goes back to that first tension there, it begs the question of how Jewish do you have to be in order to be a Christian? You know, and it's something that, it's a question that's been answered differently by different churches through, in different places and different times. But anyway, this idea of how Jewish you have to be in order to be a Christian is something that comes up frequently for us. But this idea of conversion, we had last week the story of the conversion of Cornelius, you might remember, and in a sense, whenever Paul, or I'm sorry, when Peter sees that vision while he's with Cornelius, of that sheep coming down from heaven and all these unclean quote-unquote animals, and God telling Peter to get up, kill, and eat, and Peter says, "No, no, I've never eaten anything unclean." And what does God, what's the voice in reply say to Paul, or to Peter rather?
They said that if he gave it to you, it wasn't unclean.
Yeah, you can't make unclean what God's made clean. God trumps Peter, in other words, and I think that's an important thing for us to remember. Thanks, Janice, you get a gold star today for speaking. But I, but so we have in a sense, not just the story of the conversion of Cornelius, who you'll remember was not a Jew, and then we get kind of a story that could be construed as the conversion of Peter in a sense, because Peter, his heart gets converted, because he sees Cornelius, and he sees the gift of the Holy Spirit being given to them, and baptism becomes this great equalizer amongst all of this. And so then we get to the passage for today from Acts 11, and I'm not going to read it because it's basically verbatim the previous chapter, but Peter has, I'll read just the first few verses here. "Now the apostles and the believers who were in Judea," that's Jerusalem, "heard that the Gentiles had also accepted the word of God. So when Peter went up to Jerusalem, the circumcised believers criticized him, saying, 'Why did you go to uncircumcised men and eat with them?'" Then Peter began to explain it to them step by step, saying... And then we have basically a verbatim retelling of that passage. One thing I want to point out here in verse 10, this happened three times. Peter's a bit hard-headed, isn't he? Like, this happened three times, God had to show this vision to Peter three times in order for him to get it. And so I think that's pretty funny, there's a lot of humor that goes on in here that's a little bit masked sometimes, that only kind of comes out when you read it really closely, or when you read it a second time. If you've ever watched the same movie multiple times, you know, there's certain things that you see later on that you didn't see the first time you saw, and you're like, "Oh, I see that a little bit differently now." I feel like that every time I open the pages of the Bible, because every time I read it, something new just pokes its head out at me and says, "Look at this." And so Peter gets told this vision three times, and then verse 15, "And as I began to speak, the Holy Spirit fell upon them just as it had upon us at the beginning." And they're baptized, and then, "When they heard this," and the "they" here in verse 18, is the Jerusalem church. "When the Jerusalem church heard this, they were silenced, and they praised God, saying, 'Then God has given even to the Gentiles the repentance that leads to life.'" So we have also another story of conversion, so to speak, that of the conversion of the Jerusalem church to allowing Gentiles to be a part of it, in a way that they weren't allowed to as Judaism followers, you know? So we get several stories of conversion here. If we go back to our passages last week, we started off, we had the conversion of Saul, that's a pretty big one, then we get the conversion of Ee, the Ethiopian eunuch, then we get the conversion of Cornelius, then we get the conversion of Peter, then we get the conversion of the Jerusalem church. And coming up here in just a bit, we'll get another conversion story, that of the conversion of Sergius Paulus, the proconsul. So all of this is really fascinating, how that idea of conversion kind of is woven throughout the fabric of this story of the early church. And I think that it just, it really speaks to me, because I saw, even though I hate bumper sticker theology, I also kind of like it, you know, it makes me laugh, but it also kind of gets me to thinking. And I saw a bumper sticker in Asheville a couple years ago, and it used, the reason I noted it was because it used one of my favorite words, and that is "y'all." Y'all is a very important word linguistically, it's, in English, we have no way of separating out the second person singular from the second person plural, you know? You just doesn't work. And as a way to respond to that, we've come up with all sorts of things in different areas of the country. Up in the north, they say "you skies," right? You know, and we say "y'all," and some other people say "you-uns." You-uns is not my favorite, I like "y'all" because it comes the closest linguistically to stuff, but the bumper sticker I saw said, "Y'all means all." And it does, I mean, it's right there in the word itself, "you all," "y'all." It also bothers me when people write it as Y-A apostrophe L-L, you know, that's not, it's Y apostrophe A-L-L. But anyway, I didn't mean to get off on my linguistic high horse there for a minute, but that idea of "y'all means all," I think we must always be ready to witness and to welcome all people. That's the general sense that I get from this story. And not only does this story emphasize that in that, you know, Peter had to see this vision three times in order to get it, but then we're told this story twice. So there's repetition going on here from the passage last week and the passage now. So anytime something's repeated multiple times, it really, you know, says to me, get this through your thick skull, stop excluding, you know, stop putting up boundaries, stop putting up walls, stop saying you're in and you're out, you know, stop saying any of this sort of stuff. It seems like anytime people put up a boundary or a wall, God knocks it down. So I just offer that for your thoughts as we start this passage, because it's really just a retelling of where we left off last week. And so pick up with verse 19. Let me go to my screen sharing thing here and see if it'll allow me to work everything. There we go. How's this for you? Is it working? Can you see the passage?
Yes.
Okay. Would anybody like to read for us? Let me get it to the right spot. Oh, and let me take the Greek and make it smaller, sorry. I was reading over all this stuff earlier, and, all right, verse 19 here of chapter 11, and we'll read 19 through, let's do through 26. Who would like to do that for us?
I'll be happy to.
Okay. Go ahead, Eunice.
Okay. "Now those who were scattered because of the persecution that took place over Stephen traveled as far as Phoenicia, Cyprus, and Antioch, and they spoke the word to no one except Jews. But among them were some men of Cyprus and Cyrene, who on coming to Antioch spoke to the Hellenist, also proclaiming the Lord Jesus. The hand of the Lord was with them, and a great number became believers and turned to the Lord. News of this came to the ears of the church in Jerusalem, and they sent Barnabas to Antioch. When he came and saw the grace of God, he rejoiced, and he exhorted them all to remain faithful to the Lord with steadfast devotion. For he was a good man, full of the Holy Spirit and of faith, and a great many people were brought to the Lord. Then Barnabas went to Tarsus to look for Saul, and when he had found him, he brought him to Antioch. So it was that for an entire year they met with the church and taught a great many people. And it was in Antioch that the disciples were first called Christians."
Okay, thank you, Eunice. So this is intriguing, isn't it? Now, the typical pattern has been, whether it's Peter, or Paul, or Barnabas, or anybody else, the typical pattern has been for them to go to the synagogues, and to preach first to the synagogues, and then maybe move further along to speaking to other people. However, we're told some other stuff here too. "Those who were scattered because of the persecution that took place over Stephen traveled as far as Phoenicia, Cyprus, and Antioch, and they spoke the word to no one except Jews." So first of all, we see the persecution that was started with Saul and the killing of Stephen, you know, those Hellenistic Jews in Jerusalem who martyred Stephen, they're going and still continuing this, and Saul, he went up to Damascus, remember, with letters from the chief priests to bring Christians or any followers of the Way in chains back to Jerusalem, basically to face a death sentence. And then he had his conversion there on the road to Damascus, but this persecution apparently is still taking place, isn't it? It didn't stop with Paul or Saul's conversion, it's still going on, and it's happening even further away than just Jerusalem, it's happening in some pretty far reaches of the ancient Near East there in the Mediterranean. And we're told, "Among them were some men of Cyprus and Cyrene, who came to Antioch. They also spoke to the Hellenist proclaiming the Lord Jesus." So they're not just in the proper Jewish temple, they're also talking to the Greek-speaking folks there who may or may not be Jewish, we're kind of given a hint that this group of Hellenists might not be all that Jewish in their inclinations, and so they're preaching to them, the Lord, we don't know their names, we just know there's some men of Cyprus and Cyrene. Any ideas who might be that person from Cyrene? Where have you also heard Cyrene before? Simon of Cyrene. Do you know who he was? Anybody remember him? Had something to do with Jesus and the crucifixion.
Is he the one that carried the cross?
Yeah, he was one of the people compelled to carry Jesus's cross, and why would we be given this guy's name and where he was from if he didn't go on to become someone of some importance in the early church? It's possible not, I mean, I'm not putting this out there as fact, but it's possible and probable that one of these men from Cyrene could have been Simon. So just a possibility. However, this is spread beyond the disciples, hasn't it? It's spread beyond the official people who Jesus chose and their replacements, whenever they got somebody other than Judas, right? I mean, this is spread beyond even that larger group of 70 disciples that followed Jesus around. This is starting now, people from the backwaters of the empire are starting to do this on their own up in Antioch. "And the hand of the Lord was with them, and a great number of believers, a great number became believers and turned to the Lord." And I love verse 22. "News of this came to the ears of the church in Jerusalem." The ears of the church. Don't you love that image? What are the ears of the church? Who are the ears of the church? News of this came to the ears of the church, and they sent Barnabas to Antioch to check it out, you know? I love it, I love it. It's like gossip being spread, isn't it? Like, did you hear about what was happening with, up in Antioch with these people from all over the place, you know, Cyrene and Cyprus? Did you hear about these outsiders like coming in and doing stuff too? What are we, what's happening to the church? Goodness, I don't know, you know? What's going to become of the church? Oh, it's just going downhill. You've seen those people from Cyprus, they don't even, they're on an island, they're all by themselves, they don't even live with everybody else. Who knows what happens on that island? I could just hear it. The ears of the church. I don't know necessarily, nor would I say who the ears of the church are here at First Church, but I can tell you who the ears of the church were in my church in Baton. I can tell you who the ears of the church were in my church up in Asheville, you know? I can tell you who the ears of the church are in all sorts, and I bet y'all could say who the ears of the church were, not that you need to do that, but I just think it's funny that the church had ears even back then, you know? I think this whole book is just, has so much humor in it that's subtle, you know, it's almost like it's got a British sense of humor about stuff, very dry. But anyway, the ears of the church, I just couldn't pass over that without mentioning something, you know? But it seems like they're beginning a new sort of pattern or policy of not just speaking to those who were only Jews, but going further, you know, tearing down that wall a little more. And so they send Barnabas to go check it out, and Barnabas went to Tarsus to, well, hold on, let me go back. Are we still on screen sharing? Let me stop screen sharing here for a minute, okay. Going back, they send Barnabas down to Antioch, and they say, "Barnabas, he's a good guy." And Barnabas, he rejoices when he sees this himself, and he says, "This is good." So Barnabas gives it his blessing, apparently that's okay to the church in Jerusalem as well. And so, but then we see a new thing coming, verse 25. "Then Barnabas went to Tarsus to look for Saul, and when he had found him, he brought him to Antioch. So it was that for an entire year they met with the church and taught a great many people, and it was in Antioch that the disciples were first called Christians." Okay, let me take us away from the text for just a minute. What year do you think this is? If we say Jesus died about 33 AD, what year do you think this is? Any clue?
Hopefully not too much later than that.
It's not too much past. And another question that really, you know, is just food for thought sort of thing, how old do you think Saul is right here? Like, so what year do you think it might be, and how old is Saul when this is going So we got two different ways you can go about looking at that. So we have a lot of information in the New Testament about Paul. There's three different sources basically that we can pull from. We can pull from Acts, you know, this section here in Acts that tells us a lot about Paul, but it's not Paul who's doing the writing, is it? It's Luke. And so we have this Acts stuff here that tells us a lot about Paul. We have Paul's writings, you know, Galatians, Romans, Ephesians, Corinthians. We have some other books of the Bible that are supposedly, that are attributed to Paul, but that Paul didn't actually write, but have his name on them, but there's no way Paul could have written some of them, so don't get too hung up on that, but there are these other letters about Paul too, and the letters that Paul wrote. So we get all sorts of stuff coming in. Who we, oh, that's just, okay, we got Leanne back. You okay, Leanne?
I am, but the same thing happened.
The same thing, huh?
Yeah.
I'm sorry that you got kicked off of there.
Our computer must be showing off or something.
Who knows? That's weird. Well, I'm sorry, I was talking, Jim came by the office earlier today, and he was mentioning that to me, I don't know why that is, but if it does... I don't know why that is, but if it does, just, just log off and log back on, and maybe that's the...
We had to shut the computer down because it's like it's locked up.
Huh. I don't know why it's doing it. So one thing, make sure you have the most current version of Zoom installed. That could be something, like go on and update Zoom, and that might help.
I've got a version from finance. Should we have a different version?
No, I mean, like the actual program itself, like when you went on and downloaded and installed Zoom. Oftentimes, if you pull it up, it'll say an update's available. Install those updates, and that might help with your problem.
Sorry.
It's okay. I mean, what, what's happening in, in your situation could be happening to other people too. So it's helpful to be able to try to navigate all this stuff. So anyway, in, we're talking about how old Paul might be here and what year it might be. In Galatians, chapter 1, verse 13, he says, "You've heard no doubt of my earlier life in Judaism. I was violently persecuting the church of God and was trying to destroy it. I advanced in Judaism beyond many among my people of the same age, for I was far more zealous for the traditions of my ancestors. But when God, who had set me apart before I was born and called me through His grace, was pleased to reveal His Son to me, so that I might proclaim Him among the Gentiles, I did not confer with any human being, nor did I go up to Jerusalem to those who were already apostles before me. But I went away at once into Arabia, and afterwards I returned to Damascus. Then after three years, I did go up to Jerusalem to visit Cephas, Peter, and stayed with him 15 days. But I did not see any other apostle except James, the Lord's brother. In what I'm writing to you before God, I do not lie. Then I went to the regions of Syria and Cilicia, and I was still unknown by sight to the churches of Judea that are in Christ. They had only heard it said, "The one who formerly was persecuting us is now proclaiming the faith he once tried to destroy, and they glorified God because of me." So that little end section there of the first chapter of Galatians gives us... So first of all, Paul spent three years after his conversion there in Damascus. You remember, he had to escape by the, the city walls at night, being led down in a basket right after that? We, we don't have a whole lot being told to us from, from Luke here in Acts about that. He kind of glosses over a whole three-year section of Paul to go into Arabia. Imagine that. Paul went to Arabia before he did any stuff in like Turkey and Greece and Italy and, and the Mediterranean world. Paul went to Arabia. Obviously, he didn't have much success there. But, but he spent three years doing that. So that's an intriguing thing to just think about, all this sort of stuff. I'll just give you a cheat sheet for it. It's likely that Paul was about 10 years younger than Jesus. If that's any help to things. It's likely that, and one of the reasons I say that is because back in that passage where we're told that they, when they were stoning Stephen, they laid their cloaks at the feet of a young man named Saul. And that word there is neaniskos in Greek. And what it means is, sometimes it can be translated as a youth or a young man. It was somebody 21 to 28 years old and unmarried. So when you got to be 28, apparently, was like when you were supposed to be married, if you were getting married. Which is, seems to me to be a bit of a random number, but okay. But, so we're told that Paul was at least less than 28 at that point. So it's likely he was about 10 years younger than Jesus. Which would put him in his early twenties whenever he was going to Damascus. And, you know, it's also often the way that Paul acts, or the way that Saul acts, you know, in this first little bit that we see him, he's very like, ah, go-getter sort of thing that we often associate with hot-headedness and being young and, and all that sort of stuff. So it's, it's likely that Paul was pretty young, even at this time, that he was still, you know, a, a young man and maybe in his 30s by, by this point. This is maybe four or five years after the crucifixion and resurrection. So if we're, if we're just trying to like place things somewhere in this timeline, just something to, to think about from other evidence. And what you gotta do is, is grab pieces of information from all over the place to put it together, to try to understand anything about Paul and his life. If, I, I love having an office at the church because I like to keep my desk totally clear of everything, unless it's something that, that I have to have. If, if it's on my desk, it's important because it just annoys me to have a cluttered desk. And so here's my stack of stuff from Paul today. This is, I, I got to take a class at Duke on the life of Paul. And so you can see the, the reading and stuff that we did with that. Paul is one of those people who I feel like the more I know about him, or the more I learn about him, the less I know. So anyway, it can be a little taxing to try to think about all of this sort of stuff. But maybe as a, a rule of thumb, we can think about Paul as being a little younger than Jesus and this being, you know, within the first decade. That, and so it's, it's amazing how quickly the church is changing. So let me bring us back to 11:27. At that time, prophets came down from Jerusalem to Antioch. One of them named Agabus stood up and predicted by the Spirit that there'd be a severe famine over all the world, and this took place during the reign of Claudius. Also, another time that we can point to things as to when Claudius's reign was. And so we're, we're right there in that same timeframe. The disciples determined that according to their ability, each would send relief to the believers living in Judea. They did this, sending it to the elders by Barnabas and Saul. What do you see in that? So here's what I see. I'll just short-circuit it here. Oftentimes in churches, like particularly churches in America, we send missionaries and money and stuff like that to places. And, and so the, the older, more affluent churches and societies are the ones who kind of prop up the newer, more missionary sort of, and oftentimes less affluent groups or churches that are amongst our, our community. But here, we have an example of the opposite happening. We have an example of these missionary outposts taking up collections to give to the people in the church in Jerusalem. Because there's a famine, and they apparently have stuff, and they're gonna share it, not just in their own little local community there in Antioch, but the Christians in Antioch want to share with the Christians in Jerusalem, who were hit especially hard by the famine. So that, that's a reversal of the way we think of things happening, isn't it? But this is also the first collection that gets taken up and sent to the church in Jerusalem. There'll be another one much later on that is much more substantial, which kind of might make a little bit of a difference when it comes to the way the, the believers in Jerusalem, as to how open they are allowing those outsider Gentiles to come in. It's like, oh no, if you eat meat sacrificed to idols or meat that has, you know, that's medium rare, and you're not circumcised, you can't be in our circle. But we have this money here that we would get. Oh, why didn't you say so? You never said anything about money. Why didn't you start with that? No, I'm, I'm just kidding, but behind every joke's a little bit of truth too, you know? So anyway, we get this example of that happening. Now, let, let's move on to, to chapter 12, cause this is some good stuff. About that time, King Herod laid violent hands upon some who belonged to the church. Oh, so we started off, it was just the, the Hellenistic Jews who were persecuting the Christians. But now it's moved to being a Roman persecution under Herod. So Herod's also persecuting the, the Christians. He had James, the brother of John, killed with the sword. Okay, well, we know from reading that passage in Galatians that James was still alive three years after Peter's conversion. So we know this is at least 36 or so. And so after he saw that, it pleased the Jews. He proceeded to arrest Peter also. This was during the festival of unleavened bread. We can also say that this is at least one year after the crucifixion and resurrection of Jesus, because we got another example of Passover being celebrated. So we know it's at least one year later. But it's likely when we add in thinking about where Paul came from and, and the whole context of Paul's chronology and life, it's likely more like four or five years afterwards. And when he had seized him, he put him in prison and handed him over to four squads of soldiers to guard him, intending to bring him out to the people after the Passover. So first of all, we have Herod politicizing his persecution of the church. Did you notice that? He's doing it because, Herod was not very well-respected by the Jews. He was a puppet king who was, was in there, and he was colluding with Rome. You know, they did not like him. And, but Herod sees that if he's persecuting the same people that they're persecuting, then the enemy of my enemy is my friend, right? And so it's like, oh, I can't stand those Christians either, and starts persecuting the, the Christians when he sees that it pleases the Jews. Not that religious stuff ever gets politicized in our day and age, right? But we, we see that happening with all of this too. So it's interesting that we get this. But Herod not only puts him in jail. So the normal thing was you would have a, a group of soldiers. There would be four soldiers who were assigned to guard the person. And they'd be chained to one of them. And you'd be chained to the one whose time it was to watch. And so since you had four of them and you had 12 hours basically during the night, then they would each have three, three-hour shifts, you know? So everybody gets one shift. Well, this, he puts 16 people guarding Peter at one time. And so, I mean, this is a, this is a big deal that we get here with this. While Peter was kept in prison, the church prayed fervently to God for him. And so anyway, Herod gets ready the next day to, to bring Peter out and basically to have him killed the same way that James was. And, and, but in the middle of the night, an angel comes in, taps Peter on the shoulder, says, get up. His chains fall off of him. The guards are just all there like it's nothing. And Peter himself doesn't think it's really happening. He thinks he's just having a vision or seeing a dream or something like that. He doesn't realize that, that what's happening with the angel's help is real. He thought he was seeing a vision, verse nine. And so they pass through all of the guards, and then they get to the iron gate, and it opens automatically for them. And, and so then Peter goes to Mary's house, the mother of John, whose other name was Mark, where many had gathered and were praying. And when he knocked at the outer gate, a maid named Rhoda came to answer. On recognizing Peter's voice, she was so overjoyed that instead of opening the gate, she ran in and announced that Peter was standing at the gate. And they said to her, you're out of your mind. Meanwhile, they're having a prayer vigil in the hopes that Peter is going to be released from prison. And so the maid Rhoda comes in and says, Peter's at the door. They say, you're out of your mind. Like, they're not believing this themselves. And so she insisted it was so. They said it's his angel, meaning that he's already dead. And it's his spirit like coming to them. But she insisted it was so. Meanwhile, Peter continued knocking, and when they opened the gate, they saw him and were amazed. He motioned to them with his hand to be silent and described for them how the Lord had brought him out of the prison. And he added, "Tell this to James and to the believers." Then he left and went to another place. When morning came, there was no small commotion among the soldiers over what had become of Peter. When Herod had searched for him and could not find him, he examined the guards and ordered them to be put to death. And then he went down to Judea from Caesarea, from Judea to Caesarea, and stayed there. So Peter high-tails it out of town after all of this and goes to Caesarea and stays there. Let's stop there for just a minute and talk about some of this. We get another prison break happening in this little passage here, don't we? Another miraculous prison break happening. We get a prayer vigil for Peter's release. And then what everybody's been praying for happens to come about, and they don't believe it. I mean, that's funny stuff, isn't it? Anyway, I, I, I just think that's, that's hilarious that all of this hap... And, but we got two stories going on here all at once. We were just told that James had been killed by Herod, that James had been in prison and that he had been killed. And then we have Peter being imprisoned, you know, with the understanding that he's gonna be killed the next day. But he's miraculously allowed to escape via the help of, of an angel. And, and everything's okay. And then he, you know, naturally gets out of town pretty quickly. But then he says, "Tell this to James and to the believers." It's like, well, Peter, we would, but James has already been killed. So you get this like thing of, why, why did, do you, do you, does that come up in your mind? Why did God allow James to be killed, but allowed Peter to escape? You know, it makes you wonder about prayer. Did they not pray as fervently for James to be able to, to escape or, or something, you know? It's one of those, prayer is a very confusing sometimes sort of thing. It's hard for us to make sense of everything. It's hard for us to know why one thing, why, that age-old question of why do bad things happen to good people? And one of the most convincing answers that I see in scripture is, well, it, it happens to you because you're a good person. Bad things happen to you because you're good and the world's bad. And, you know, but there, sometimes it seems that God intervenes, and other times it seems that God may not be intervening. But I, I, I don't have the answers for us on that. But, you know, it's, it makes me wonder about things. But anyway, do y'all have questions or thoughts?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I know this is what my commentary says about the James, but I wanted your take on it. I mean, I heard your take, but he says this James was Jesus's brother, who became a leader in the Jerusalem church.
Yeah.
Is that possible? Okay.
I mean, we, we don't know much, but oftentimes James is referred to as the brother of Jesus. And so the, I mean, there's some people who, there's all sorts of ideas. We don't know a whole lot, other than just what scripture tells us. But yeah, that James is often referred to as James, the brother of Jesus.
Okay.
All right, well, well, I'll, I'll just put a little sticker in that and say, we could come back to this at some point. But he, he high-tails it out of Jerusalem, or as I like to refer to it, J-Town. High-tails it out of J-Town and goes to Caesarea. And I love this passage right here. Chapter 12, verse 20. Anybody wanna read that? I'll go to sharing my screen again. Any takers? Any takers? Okay, I'll read it. So, verse 20. "Now, Herod was angry with the people of Tyre and Sidon." So, that's basically present-day Lebanon. And we don't know why he's angry with them, but he's using his political power to get back at them for something. And so, there's a big famine that's happening. And most of the grain was at that point in Herod's kingdom. And so, Herod was, for political purposes, mad at the people of Tyre and Sidon over something, who knows? So, he's keeping them from getting their food that they need. And so, they come to him. "And after winning over Blastus, the king's chamberlain, they asked for a reconciliation, because their country depended on the king's country for food. And on an appointed day, Herod put on his royal robes, took a seat on the platform and delivered a public address to them. And the people kept shouting, 'The voice of a God and not of a mortal.' And immediately, because he had not given the glory to God, an angel of the Lord struck him down, and he was eaten by worms and died." I mean, wow. So much going on there. "But the word of God continued to advance and gain adherents. And then, after completing their mission, Barnabas and Saul returned to Jerusalem and brought with them John, whose other name was Mark." Okay, so, the death of Herod. Herod was a bad guy. I mean, this guy, he, he was the epitome of corruption and just, the way that he gets portrayed in Jesus Christ Superstar is probably pretty, pretty good in comparison to the way that he really was. Herod and his father before him were, were just bad, bad people. And so, going on to verse 23. "And immediately, because he had not given glory to God, an angel of the Lord struck him down, and he was eaten by worms and died." Okay, so, this, this phrase here, "Eaten by worms and died", in the Greek, it's the word scule cobrotos, okay? Scule cobrotos. And it means eaten by worms death. So, there was a way of dying in the ancient world that where you actually were eaten by worms and died, you know? Like, that was the, it was an official scientific medical explanation for one way in which people died. Those were usually really bad people that died that way. And there was often this idea that if you died in a bad way, that you were a bad person and it was, you know, fate or whatever, just getting back at you. There's a couple, I, I did a lot of investigation into this just because I think it's hilarious and gross and horrible all at once. So, there's, there's three basic options as to what happened. And Josephus, if you've ever heard of Josephus, he was a historian. We might call him a more secular historian for the Roman Empire. And he wrote, one of his books was The Antiquities of the Jews. So, Rome employed him to write a history of the Jewish people. I mean, now, granted, they employed him to write a history of the Jewish people, but he's not going to be able to say all sorts of bad stuff against Rome, is he? Because they're the ones paying for it. He's working for them, you know? It's not going to, so, this idea, a lot of times people will come up and say, "Oh, well, it's in the Bible." They were, they were biased. They're biased, that's why they said that this happened. And, you know, we use a secular historian and they could give us a better account. Well, Josephus actually gives us an account of this same event. And what's amazing is just how closely it all relates. There's one difference, and that is, so he tells us, "On the second day of which shows, he put on a," this is talking about Herod, "he put on a garment made holy of silver and of a contexture truly wonderful, and came into the theater early in the morning, at which time the silver of his garment, being illuminated by the fresh reflection of the sun's rays, shone on it after a surprising manner, and was so resplendent as to spread a horror over those who looked intently upon him. And presently, his flatterers cried out, one from one place and another from another, though not for his good, that he was a god, and that he added, 'Be thou merciful to us, for although we have hitherto reverenced thee only as a man, yet shall we henceforth own thee as a superior to mortal nature.'" "Upon this, the king did neither rebuke them nor reject their impious flattery; but as he presently afterwards looked up, he saw an owl sitting on a certain rope over his head and immediately understood that this bird was the messenger of ill tidings, as it had once been the messenger of good tidings to him. And he fell into the deepest sorrow. A severe pain also arose in his belly and began in a most violent manner. He therefore looked upon his friends and said, 'I whom you call a god am commanded presently to depart this life, while providence thus reproves the lying words you just now said to me. And I, who was by you called immortal, am immediately to be hurried away by death.'" And when he said this, his pain was become violent. And accordingly, he was carried into the palace and the rumor went abroad everywhere that he would certainly die in a little time. And that happened five days later, according to Josephus and his secular account of all this. But, the thing is, so, I'm, I'm pretty like amazed at just how, how similar this is to the biblical accounts, you know? But, either way, this eaten by worms death, it's likely that it was an infection that he got that was a complication from having syphilis. You know, it's also possible that this was a disease known as Fournier gangrene of the genitals. Yeah, this is all just such fun stuff, isn't it? Like, sore, open sores and his entrails being gorged upon by worms. This is just, ugh, crazy stuff. But, at the same time, it's, it's linked to the way in which this guy lived too. And it's kind of seen as, as God interposing and showing this guy, you know, making sure this dude doesn't do anything else and dies in a horrible way by, by some people, you know? So, it's like, why does God work this way in some cases and this way in another and not do anything here or there? And so, it, it, it's confusing. However, Herod was a bad guy and died an even worse death. I think that goes without saying. Then, in, let me, can I, can I have fifteen more minutes? I know I always say that each week. But, y'all got fifteen more minutes to have fun with this?
Yes.
Hey, we'll, we'll try to do chapter thirteen. "Now, in the church of Antioch, there are prophets and teachers, Barnabas, who we know, Simeon, who was called Niger, Lucius of Cyrene, Manneian, a member of the court of Herod the ruler, and Saul." This is a diverse group right here. Simeon, who was called Niger, means black. You know, Lucius of Cyrene, Manneian, a member of the court of Herod. And then you got Barnabas and Saul. That is a very diverse group of people that's right there, which tells us that the early church was not just one ethnicity. I mean, this is quickly becoming a global movement. And I, I mean, global in the sense of the ancient world doesn't get much more global than a couple hundred miles, you know? And this is a group of people from all over. "So, while they were worshiping the Lord and fasting, the Holy Spirit said, 'Set apart for me, Barnabas and Saul, for the work to which I've called them.' Then, after fasting and praying, they laid, laid their hands on them and sent them off." So, being sent out by the Holy Spirit, they went down to Seleucia and from there, they sailed to Cyprus. "When they arrived at Salamis, they proclaimed the word of God in the synagogues of the Jews." Okay, that's just what they've been doing, that's their pattern, you know? They'll arrive at a place, go to the synagogue on the Sabbath, teach about Jesus and that sort of thing, and then move on from there. And they also had John to assist them, John Mark. He later leaves them because he just feels like they've gone too open to the Gentiles and aren't Jewish enough for him. And he just can't in good faith keep doing what they're doing and he goes back to Jerusalem. "But when they had gone through the whole island, as far as Paphos, they met a certain magician, a Jewish false prophet named Bar-Jesus. He was with the proconsul, Sergius Paulus, an intelligent man who summoned Barnabas and Saul and wanted to hear the word of God. But the magician, Elimus, for that's the translation of his name, it's not actually the translation of his name. Translation of his name is Aramaic for just son of Jesus. And Jesus was a common name, not just, you know, Jesus being named that. Opposed them and tried to turn the proconsul away from the faith. But Saul, also known as Paul," oh, first time we get Paul being referred to in Acts as something other than Saul. It wasn't the conversion on the road to Damascus that changed his name. A lot of people associate that with that event, but that's not the case. He continues to be referred to as Saul up until this point. And this one just gives us another name of his, which is Paul. "Filled with the Holy Spirit, looked intently at him and said, 'You, son of the devil, you enemy of all righteousness, full of all deceit and villainy, will you not stop making crooked the straight paths of the Lord? And now, listen, the hand of the Lord is against you and you will be blind for a while, unable to see the sun. Immediately, mist and darkness came over him, and he went about groping for someone to lead him by the hand. When the proconsul saw what had happened, he believed, for he was astonished at the teaching about the Lord.'" Okay. Paul, or Saul, and Bar-Jesus, or Elimus. What do you see those two having in common?
Paul was a non-believer to begin with, just like Bar-Jesus was a non-believer, until he was blinded. And that's what happened to Paul, and that's...
It's important to note that he was blinded for a time. Temporary blindness. And then, look what else Bar-Jesus or Elimus does. He, he's groping around for someone to lead him by the hand. That's exactly what Paul was doing, or Saul was doing on the road to Damascus, isn't it? This idea of punitive miracle being, but it's, it's also kind of a, it's not a, a mean sort of thing. It's not a, "I'm better than you and you're going to be blind forever." It's a merciful, almost, sort of punitive thing. I, I just find those two people really interesting. We have Saul or Paul talking about the straightness of everything and being, you know, righteous and all this. And then you get Bar-Jesus being, you know, making the crooked, making the straight crooked. And, and it's like polar opposites. But yet, they're also kind of two sides of the same coin, aren't they? They got so much in common. But I want us to talk about, real quick, in the seven or eight minutes we got left, Sergius Paulus. So, let me, let me just tell you a little something. I, I won't ask you to guess about who this guy might be. Sergius Paulus, we're told, is a proconsul. Now, in the Roman Empire, the way, the hierarchy that you have, you got the emperor who's up there at the top, you know? He's the, the, the big cheese. And then you also have, in addition to the emperor, you also have the Senate, you know? And the Senate has some power too. They're not powerless. They can keep the emperor in check. But, one thing that often doesn't get communicated is the, the different hierarchies that are there. Now, there's also two people during this time of the Roman Empire called consuls, who are kind of in between the Senate and the emperor. The closest equivalent would be like if we had, well, the closest equivalent in our system of government is the vice president and the speaker of the house. I mean, kind of functioning as that second-in-command and third-in-command sort of thing. But if we had, if our second and third-in-command were equal, you know, like partners between the two, if we had two vice presidents and no speaker of the house sort of thing, that's a consul. Now, if there was something big happening, and those consuls could only serve two years. But if there was a big war happening that they were in charge of, then that could be extended, at which point they become known as a proconsul. It's kind of like being a professor emeritus, you know? It's a, you could stay on for a little longer as, as this second-in-command sort. And proconsuls and consuls also had legions of troops at their disposal, okay? Like, they had their own armies that were loyal to them. You know, in the Iraq war, where there was that guy, Al-Baghdadi? And, and they had all these like militias that were loyal to this one. It's kind of like that, in that these consuls had legions sometimes of troops who were loyal to them, who they could call on to, to fight battles wherever. And they, he didn't need the, the, I mean, typically, you wanted the blessing of the emperor and the Senate, but he didn't need permission from either of those to, to utilize those troops. This, this guy, Sergius Paulus, is a big deal. He's not just high-class, high-economic. I, I mean, they also pulled down a salary that would have been the equivalent of, of, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars a year in, in revenues from Rome for their job. But, this is, this is a big deal. This is like having a vice president that you just converted. Paul, getting this guy Sergius Paulus converted and, and over to, to being a follower of Jesus, or at least in those first stages, this was a huge deal. I mean, a huge deal. Because up until now, it's been little people on the outskirts, you know, some, some wealthy folks, lots of poor folks too, some in-between, some of high status, some of low status, some slaves, some free. But here we have Paul making the slam dunk of his career by converting this guy Sergius Paulus, who was a proconsul, okay? I mean, this is a huge deal. And it's been surmised by several scholars that not only did this allow Paul, it's likely that Sergius Paulus became Paul's benefactor. So, he might not have been able to go on all those missionary journeys had Sergius Paulus not paid for them, you know? He might not have been able to start all those churches throughout Turkey and Greece and Italy, had this guy Sergius Paulus not been Paul's financier and personal bank. It's, it's also likely that this guy could have even been the, the person Luke alludes to as, as being Theophilus, God-lover, you know? Because, things didn't get done without money. And not only would having Sergius Paulus as a financial backer of Paul's ministry been important, it also would have given him letters. Sergius Paulus could have given him letters. You remember me saying in previous studies that if you didn't have a letter from somebody, you were, like, you couldn't just go stay at the Holiday Inn sort of thing. And, oh, I'm, like, if you didn't have contacts wherever it was you were going, you, you were up the creek in the ancient world. And so, it was important to have letters. That's that letter that, that Saul got from the chief priest when he was going up to Damascus. Well, now, if it's the case that, and we don't know, I mean, it's just all conjecture. But, if it's the case that Sergius Paulus became Paul's benefactor, I mean, it, I think it's more just happenstance that Paul starts being referred to as Paul here, rather than Saul. But some folks have even said that Paul changed his name to Paul from Saul as an honorific sort of way, like as being adopted by this proconsul. I mean, nobody can say this happened, or this definitely didn't happen, or this definitely did, you know? I mean, it's, it's all, to some sense, just kind of trying to, to figure out what's happening here. But it's, it's a, it's a certain possibility. And not something that I think should be quickly dismissed as, "Oh, that, that doesn't mean anything." Because in that, in that world of the ancient Near East and ancient Mediterranean, you needed a benefactor like that in order to do the sorts of things that Paul's able to do. Now, what Sergius Paulus is having all of those legions of troops loyal to him? Now, um, what Sergius Paulus is having all of those legions of troops loyal to him, every, a lot of the major cities that Paul goes to, Ephesus, you know, and then other places in, in Greece, those are all cities where Sergius Paulus had a legion of troops. And so if, if Paul comes to you and your commander in chief, basically, who's like one of the people above the Senate, but below the emperor, one of only two, you know? If that important guy who's like your main boss says, here, uh, this guy Paul is my emissary, listen to him. That's going to make becoming a Christian a lot more, uh, helpful of a thing for you, you know? So it's, it's likely that this could have had some bearing at least on Paul's message. Another thing is there's this, this, uh, cult that was often worshipped and associated with, uh, with soldiers called the Cult of Mithras. Have you ever heard of Mithras before? M-I-T-H-R-A-S. And one of the things that you would, it was kind of like one of these things where a bull was the symbol that was associated and worshipped as part of this. And one of the rituals that you would do is you would slaughter the bull and then drink the bull's blood. You know, it was all a masculine virility sort of, I'm a big tough soldier sort of thing. But you could see how there could be a, an easy bridge from drinking blood of like, you know, a bull in essence to, to communion and, you know, ingesting the body and blood of Jesus, so to speak, in a symbolic way. All sorts of, and all sorts of little things like that, that are here. But, um, I think it's important that we note that Paul was a man of many cultures. He was a Roman citizen and he was a Jew. But he was, he was too, uh, Gentile for the Jews, but he was too Jewish for the Gentiles lots of times. You know, he was in this space where he was kind of all things to all people, as he said, um, you know, in our, uh, the passage I preached on this past Sunday. Anyway, questions? Comments? Probably not something you've heard before, I guess. Not, and I'm, and again, I'm not saying this is, this is fact. I'm just saying this is, this is, are certain possibilities that could be, uh, at play here with regards to everything that was happening in the world at the time when Paul was, was active and, and preaching and, uh, doing his missionary journeys and stuff. But I noticed a whole lot of, um, stuff in this passage about conversion. We get a lot of conversion and we get a lot of tensions that are, that are mounting and rising between what we would call Christianity and Judaism. So we start to see a little more Gentile emphasis and, uh, we start to see a lot about some of the stuff that Paul is doing. So anyway, our passage next week will be Acts 13, 13 through 15, 29. So we'll, uh, talk about that bit for the next two chapters, basically. Two, three chapters, uh, next Wednesday at three. And I'm always happy to entertain questions or thoughts or whatever during the week, whether it's about the Bible study or anything else. But I hope you're, I, I hope you're enjoying the reading through the book of Acts. Are you so far?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Are, are there other like things that you've noticed in the course of this study that maybe you haven't thought about in that way before or?
I want to ask if anyone has seen the movie Paul. It was a great movie I saw in the theaters.
When did that come out?
It was last year.
Oh, okay.
So it should be available to rent.
What was the name of it?
Paul.
Paul, oh, okay.
Do you know like who wrote it or who was in it?
It, it was a biblical movie. It played at the gym in Kannapolis.
Oh, did it?
Mm-hmm. And, um, it didn't have any real stars, but it was a very moving, uh, experience.
I'll have to look it up. I, um, I didn't hear about it. Let's see, I, uh, just doing a quick search on. So it's not Saul, the journey to Damascus from 2014?
No, because it has, um, it, it's told in a series of flashbacks. Luke has come to the prison to visit him.
Okay.
He's in chains and, and he's having Luke to write his letters.
Oh, okay, interesting. Well, I have to, I'll have to do some investigations, see if I can find it. I always love stuff like that, whether it's, you know, well, I, I, I just love all that sort of stuff. Thanks, Wanda.
I would recommend it.
Well, thanks y'all for bearing with me 20 minutes later than we were supposed to.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing y'all next week. And, uh, and hey, watch out for, uh, I do not want to do any funerals where you've been eaten by worms. Let's avoid that eaten by worm death, okay? Don't, don't wear silver capes. Don't try to say that you're God, um, and then maybe we'll be able to avoid the eaten by worms death. See y'all.
Bye.
Bye. Everybody.